Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting. The main focus of this meeting will be the back to school plan by the administration in from the guidance that Desi gave. With that, I'm going to start, I'm going to ask people, what's going to happen is we're going to go through the plan. If if people have particular questions, I'm going to ask for time for questions. So I'm going to ask you to post them then primarily because what I'd like to make sure of is that we see your question in the time we're going to ask questions because I'd hate to miss somebody's question. That being said, what usually happens is Sean and I look over the questions afterwards. If we saw something that was not answered, we try to answer it in some way. So we will try to do that. So with that, does any school committee member have anything they wish to report? Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to remind folks, I teased it last last week, but there's a virtual candidates night on the 23rd, which is this coming Tuesday at 7:00 P. M. And the way you can figure out more about this and how to hear from the candidates is to go on our on a Facebook account called Saturdays Are For The Votes. And we've posted the full announcement there. It's also a middle bur helping Middleborough. But if if you're interested in going to that and you don't know how, please just reach out to me. I'd be happy to give you the information. Again, that's March 23rd, Tuesday at 7:00 P. M. And we invited and got a lot of confirmations from candidates. So it'd be a good way for you to hear from the candidates for the upcoming April 3rd election. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oakley. Ms. Farley, go right ahead.
Just a thank you to Mr. Brannigan and his team for getting our seniors an opportunity to get together this Saturday and have their first senior Saturday, which I know is something that they have not done in the past. But through COVID, they've been trying to look at different ways to get those kiddos together. So just wanted to thank him and the team for giving our kids a chance to get together.
Any other questions or comments? Meg, go right ahead.
I just wanted to thank everybody that helped make Friday night, the football game and the opening of the stadium happen. It was really, really nice. They did a great job with it and the stadium is beautiful. So if you haven't gone and seen it, you definitely should.
Thank you, Mr. Oakley. You have your hand up. Go right ahead.
I'm sorry, I should have thought of this. I just wanted to reiterate that if folks are watching at home and they had a question or a comment, but for whatever reason, they can't use Facebook or YouTube, they can send questions to questions@middleborough.k12.m a.us. And that email address is always listed on the agendas and it's monitored during our meetings. So if you have a question, please send it over there.
Anybody else have anything before I move on? All right, with that, we're going to get right into the superintendent's report and the bulk of it is obviously the plan. So I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the committee. Tonight's primary focus is the return to school plan. And we're going to sort of go through the document here. It's going to be on the screen for you. And for those folks at home, as you know, there's been a great deal of planning that's gone into this. Hopefully, it's well thought out. A lot of questions folks might have tonight about individual teachers and classes will be answered in the days to come as people as principals reach out with assignments and potential changes as such. We don't have specific changes and specific answers for specific families this evening. This is a general presentation on the full return plan. If I walk you through this, obviously, there's a header page and then there's a table of contents, obviously. And then we have a a plan that's basically summarized there and it is ADA compliant and will go on the website. So it's translated into many different languages. Disclaimer, basically stating that this plan may change depending on what happens. As you know, the pandemic has been something that has been something that we can't always track with surges and things such as that. Decisions made at the upper levels of government that we can't control. And so the disclaimer says that we will basically consider the well being, health and safety of our students, faculty and staff. It's our number one priority and our district will respond to guidance in order to maintain our focus on this priority. So in saying that, we go to the next page, which identifies our guiding principles, which you've seen before, talking about the fact that we've developed this set of guiding principles in an effort to focus our decision making during this difficult and challenging time. We've held these guiding principles at the center of all decisions and will continue to ensure a clear focus on well being, relationships and learning for every student in every classroom and every day. And that's the theme of our district. And we look at well being, like I said, relationships and learning. Now, basically into the meat of the plan is basically that we're taking our kindergarten through eighth grade and we're bringing them back in as of Monday, April 5th. It is our intention to bring all students, if they'd like to come back in, to classrooms and to schools on April 5th. We've obviously surveyed our parents and we've received answers. The ones we didn't receive answers, we had to reach out to this week. We had schools that had really close to 100%. We had schools that weren't so close to 100%. We had administrators and secretaries reaching out to families so that we could get a full accounting for what parental choices people wanted to make. And we're moving on in order to best prepare our school buildings for the full return of our students. We'll be adjusting, we'll need to adjust our school calendar to accommodate our need to reorganize and refigure classrooms and cafeterias and gymnasiums and the like to ensure the health, safety and well being of our students, faculty and staff. So the following are the changes to the official school calendar recommended this evening to support our full reopening kindergarten through eighth grade. First of all, Monday, March 29th, Tuesday, March 30th and Wednesday, March 31st will be remote learning days for kindergarten through eighth grade students in cohorts two, three and four. Our cohorts one students will be in school for in person instruction on Monday, March 29th through Monday through Wednesday, March 31st. And then all K through eight students on April 1st and April 2nd will have their full professional development days and therefore there will be no school for kindergarteners through eighth grade students on the Friday and on the Thursday and Friday, April 1st and 2nd. So that would be all kindergarten through eighth grade students on those two days. Friday, April 16th and Monday, April 26th will then be full school days for kindergarten through eighth grade students. So those days that were dis-scheduled for professional development days for the entire district will only be for high school. And there's a note on the bottom, impact for full reopening upon for Middleboro High School. Middleboro High School will continue to follow their current schedules until such time as the new building is opened and a supplemental plan can be developed. Significant issues surrounding construction of the new building and its grounds may preclude a full reopening. Their present calendar will remain unchanged for the time being. And again, April 26th and 20th, April 16th and 26th will remain as full professional development days for the high school only. There'll be no school for nine to 12 students on April 16th and 26th. As far as school lunch goes, we will continue on that week, March 29th through April 2nd. We will have a grab and go lunch system, much like we've had in the past, for anyone who wants to come to school and get some meals for students. And that's described in this plan, which will be posted on the website. And that will be similar to what, like I said, we've done in the past. And school lunch procedure for online learning academy students will be the same. It'll be available every morning, 9:15 to 10:15, just like the school lunch for K to eight students. Our cafeteria staff will be working that week and preparing meals. So we encourage encourage folks to to participate in this grab and go program. Those students who are in school in cohort one will have hot lunch served in school as we usually do. So that basically sums up the basic plan. Everything else is universal health and safety practices will be in place. We'll continue to have six feet social distancing when students take off their masks. We'll have three feet social distancing in classrooms from seat edge to seat edge. We'll continue to have mitigation strategies in place with masks and face coverings. Our mask policy has not changed. We ask encourage people to wear their mask correctly. We've had some nice success with the masking and it's worked out very well. So we, as you know, our numbers are significantly down in the district. As of last week, we had two active cases in the entire school district between all faculty, staff and students. We'll continue to encourage hand washing and hand sanitizing. And we'll have assigned seating. We've maximized our ventilation. We've added and equipped our classrooms with professional three stage Hapa air purifiers in every classroom. We've had air quality tests taken at the beginning of the year and quarterly since. And we'll continue to do that and share that with anyone who'd like to see that. And we'd also encourage that if students are sick or symptomatic or not feeling well, they should stay home. That's an important piece to this. And if they're where if they're spiking a fever and just Tylenol doesn't get rid of that fever, it covers it up for a little bit. So it asked if you're not feeling well, the families keep their children home. That's an important mitigation strategy. We have a health checklist that we've put up on the board and we've continued to have it up there. And we will continue to prepare for COVID-19 scenarios. We will have contact tracing still in place. If students are identified as COVID, they will be quarantined and that's described. Would also certainly encourage people to get tested and continue to get tested. Obviously, people getting vaccine, continue to get vaccines, especially our educators. And there's a large influx influx of educators who are getting vaccinated now and who continue to get vaccinated. We know appointments are difficult to get. The the community is opening up in terms of the phases that the governor has identified for continued vaccinations. And hopefully that will continue throughout. We have our regular sanitizing and disinfecting that's going on throughout the district as usual. That has not slowed and hopefully it seems like it's it's working and it's worked. So the basic plan there is is on page seven of this document. For those parents that want to tune in, again, this evening, we do not have specific answers for you in terms of your situation with your child in your classroom. Or your your principals will have that information beginning tomorrow and they'll be reaching out with with that information to you. So that being said, I will certainly answer any questions the school committee might have and respond to any questions the community might have. But the plan basically is for the week prior to the full reopening, which is on Monday, April 5th, that we will have a full remote in for for grades K through eight, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And we will have professional development days for teachers on the first and second. And schools will be closed to students on the first and second of April. And I will entertain any questions you might have.
So with that, I just want to go over a couple of things. One is we're going to do the plan first and have a conversation about the plan. And then after that, we will have a conversation about the calendar because I set that up as two separate action items. So with that, I would ask if people have questions about anything to do with going back to school with the exception of the calendar, to put those in the chat box and we're going to start. So Brian, I'm going to start with a couple of questions, some of which I know the answer is for, but I want the community. And so currently at the six feet apart during when masks are off, we we cannot fit all the children, we cannot do lunches just in the cafeteria. So explain how lunches will be different for students the rest of the week.
Lunches will be, some will be in cafeteria spaces, some will be in gymnasium spaces and some will be in other open spaces that we use. So we will utilize every space that we can. Unfortunately, what that creates is a system whereby, for example, the Nichols Gymnasium will not be available and those those teachers will be doing alternative scheduling. And hopefully the weather will improve and then we can can begin going outside to do more outside activities. Fortunately, Nichols and and other schools do. We have some nice fields and some nice activities outside that can be done. But they'll be doing other lessons such as health lessons, et cetera, in classrooms on an as needed basis. But those larger spaces will be taken up for cafeterias. It's the only way we can make this work because those students, when they take off the mask, need to be six feet away from other students. And we've been able to do it in a hybrid model. But now we need to do it with everybody back, K through eight. So we need more space and we will be taking that space to make it work.
And Brian, I guess the question related to that for me is, and you may not know this because this might be a principal piece, but for example, in the elementary schools, will there be lunches and cafeteria workers ready for them in the gym? Or do you foresee kids going from the cafeteria to the gym with food?
No, we'll be transporting food to those areas. Our cafeteria staff will be transporting food to those areas. If you can recall, last week we had a donation. One of those donations was the purchase of a couple of traveling vehicles that could get food heated or cold to areas such as exterior areas other than the cafeteria.
Okay. And again, so the hope for gym classes related to losing the gym is that whenever possible, gym classes would be held outside if weather permitting. But in if the weather's bad, then we would hold sort of alternative gym classes in the classroom, correct?
Right, and in any open spaces, absolutely. And you know, things such as yoga and things like that that can sometimes be done if we have enough space in the rooms to do that, we'll do that. And I expect our our phys ed teachers and will will be very creative in doing this because, you know, they 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 know they they have a curriculum to get through and they want to get through their curriculum and and we'll do it as as well as we possibly can. But it'll be in alternative spaces in a lot of cases. If we reopen the high school, the high school, the brand new high school gymnasium will be a cafeteria. If we reopen the high school, that's one of those considerations we're looking at in terms of the high school.
And Brian, MKG does not have a gym. So how would they use the, how would they be using extra space for cafeterias?
Well, they'll be using their cafeteria spaces cafeteria, but they'll also be using the Berklin cafeteria. While the Berklin might be using the Berklin gym for their cafeteria. So there'll be sharing of spaces and and quite frankly, Lisa White, principal at MKG and Derek Thompson have met on several occasions and continue to meet about sharing of spaces. And that's an important piece to this.
Okay. And can you also talk about one of the things that we had a discussion about was not just about space for for kids, but we still need space for teachers for both prep and lunchtime. So how will that be?
The principals are working that out and they they I've asked them each if they can do it, if they're going to do it and they're able to do it. So they're that's going to be worked out at the classroom, at the teach at the school level with the with the teachers in those schools. They'll all have spaces where they can eat and and socialize six feet apart if they like, or they can have their individual spaces at times.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to other members right now. If anyone has particular questions, so Teresa, go right ahead.
Not so much a question, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows. I know that we talked about needing more monitors and that you did put that out, Brian. So just kind of a reminder to people that I know that you're looking for some cafeteria monitors to help this plan happen, so.
Yeah, thanks, Teresa. I do appreciate that. We are looking for 14 total recess and cafeteria monitors. It's three and a half hours a day, sort of mother father hours, if you will, and and they're they're it's $15 an hour. It's not great, may not even compete with McDonald's, but it is something that we would certainly encourage. I know we have a lot of feedback at one of our meetings about I'd like to volunteer, I'd like to help, whatever. If you're one of those folks that that was that had reached out in the past and had indicated that we're on schoolspring.com. If you'd like to put in your name, be interviewed by a principal and we'll get you in here and and help out. It's also a grace op, a great opportunity some at some point during the day, maybe to say hello to your own child and as they walk by in the hallway or if they're even in the cafeteria with you. So but you'll be there for everyone. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
And Mr. Rowe, I know you had your hand up, so go right ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious what the lunches will look like. Are they going to be sitting at opposite ends of the table? Are they going to have these the desks that we ordered? Are they going to be Plexiglas? What is the experience from right now? I mean, my daughter's at MKG, she goes across the hall and eats in the classroom, obviously, the other classroom. That can't happen because there'll be a class there. So obviously, the procedures and stuff, I trust the principals to do that, but the the physicality of it. Do we have the desks?
Do we have? We do have the extra desks and they'll be sitting at desk because they're the desk that came out of the old classrooms. We ordered new desks for the classrooms and those desks will be six feet apart, basically from seat edge to seat edge in in an organized way and to maximize those spaces. So they'll be sitting at desks, there are no partitions, there's no plastic around them. They're just they'll be six feet apart in in those organized spaces, in those larger spaces.
Are they getting assigned seats for contact tracing? Are they?
They'll have assigned seats, they'll have assigned seats on the bus, they'll have assigned seats in the cafeteria so that we can do the contact tracing. It's a good point, Mr. Rowe. Thank you.
Related to that, Brian, and because Teresa brought it up, if you do not get lunch monitors and recess monitors, can you talk about that?
Well, then we'll be in a different place. Then we'll have to utilize our ESPs and our our staff in the buildings in other ways, basically. And that will be that'll be a different setup. Our hope is to get those 14 folks to help out. And if we can't get those 14 folks to help out, then we'll be just, it'll be everyone on deck, if if you will. It'll be principals, assistant principals, it'll be school adjustment counselors, it'll be school psychologists, it'll be anyone else that that we can get to fill those spaces. If I need to go down and cover a lunch, I'll go down and cover a lunch. It's just one of those situations where we need these additional people to help cover for contractual time also. It's quite quite to be quite truthful. So and that's important. So hopefully, we'll get these 14 folks on board in the next couple of weeks and that will take care of the issue. I called Tracy Donohue, we were talking today about buses and bus transportation. And she's looking at all her routes and making sure she doesn't have to make major changes, probably go back to the original routes that we had that were scheduled that we had last year, basically, and she's working on that and those will be posted in the near future. But I asked her, I said, listen, we we have a couple of your drivers who are lunch monitors in the middle of their days. If you have any other drivers who are willing to come help us out, you know, it doesn't pay a lot, but and we're not going to, we can't pay the driver pay that they get normally get, but it's something maybe in the middle of the day to do. They're good at large group supervision, we know that for the most part. So and and I I asked her to post, so she's posting that at the bus terminal down there on on 28 and hopefully we'll get a couple of people from there. I've asked principals to talk to their PTO presidents to make sure the word gets out in at PTAs and PTOs and and get those folks to see as many people as we possibly can, while up to 14, up to and including 14, so.
Handing up cigarette.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lynch, I wondered if you could talk about the what the results of the the survey ended up showing and, you know, how many people, you know, however you you want to say it, but how many, basically, how many people are coming back? How many people are staying remote?
Well, we have a number that will continue to stay remote and but we have some, we have a good number coming in. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me tonight, but the changes will be made accordingly. Dr. Gates may have a better idea on numbers. I know she's in the backstage if she, I don't want to even put her on, put her on the stage unknowingly, but we had talked earlier that somebody might ask that question. I just don't have those exact numbers right now. But in general, we had kind of a wash for people coming back in and people going out. There were people that were in hybrid that wanted to go fully remote. There were people fully remote that wanted to come back in to full in person. So the the numbers were enough that we we could handle what we could handle with our faculty that we have. So and Dr. Gates, Dr. Gates, I just got word, she does not have hard numbers in front of her this evening, so. Any student family affected by this will be notified and this will be explained to them.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this kind of goes to something that Mr. Lynch, you and I talked about last week. But any student that's currently in cohort two or three in hybrid model will not be changing their teacher. Is that the plan?
That is the plan.
So so if they're in hybrid now, cohort two or three, they're keeping the same teacher?
That is the general plan. So students and families will find out tomorrow or families will find out tomorrow or beginning tomorrow on exactly their situation. But it was our intent to make sure that that it is as much as possible would happen. I cannot tell you it's 100% right now. I can tell you it's 99.
So I'm going to just ask a couple of questions and then I'll go back to school committee members, okay?
I think Ms. Farley had a question.
Yeah, no, no, I'm going to go back. I I'm just going to rotate a little bit because I want to go through some of the questions on the board. There were a lot of questions around busing. Brian, the main question being the following. One, will can people who are obviously just coming to the school take buses? And the related question to that seems to be, is there going to be a bus schedule posted so that people can see what time they their child would be picked up and things like that?
Tracy Donahue, who's our manager at First Student, is going through those routes now and she will be posting, reposting bus routes. I would say they're probably going to be pretty similar to what they were in the 2019, 2020 school year before the closure with very few changes. But that will be just about what it's going to be, but those will be posted in the near future. I would also encourage folks that if you want to drive your children, you're certainly continue to be welcome to dine on those. A lot of people still drive their children to school back and forth and you're certainly welcome and encouraged to do that also. The the transportation guidelines have said we can put students back on buses. They were a bit restrictive at the middle school and high school if we were continue to be a red community, which we're not. And so now those students can be more than two students a a bench, but we we're in a position where I don't think we'll need that. But those will we'll find that out as we move forward through what Mrs. Donahue has to do. And that's right now, that's the work of First Student and they'll continue to do their work.
Brian, related to buses again, will there be late buses for after school help?
We have late buses that are scheduled at the middle school and high school and those will be continue to be available.
Okay. And is Champion available to parents before and after school?
We will continue to have a Champions before and after school program. We've reached out to Kerry Kubaki, who's the manager of that of Champions. And we plan to go back to pre-closure Champions quality service. That's our intent.
Thank you. Then I'm going to stop there.
Mr. Chair, they will continue to have, they will have vacation programs also. They plan to have an April vacation or April break program and they plan to have a summer program also.
Teresa, I know you had your hand up, so I want to make sure I go back. I'm going to go back and forth on that.
Thank you. My my question was actually regarding busing as well. I just wanted to make sure people should expect a survey, I would assume, so that they can now decide, okay, I'm back full time, I didn't use the bus for hybrid, but now I want the bus. So that was just all I wanted to make sure people would would know that the next step would likely be a survey regarding busing again, correct, Brian?
We we I don't believe we're going to do a survey at this point. I think we're going to set up our bus stops the way we've done in the past so that they're designed for every student to be picked up. And if we discover that there's only one student on Rambling Road and and that we don't stop at Rambling Road, I mean, that's the type of thing. But we we set them up based on our asthma system, based on our address system so that every student who needs a ride to school will get one.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Brian, will will Champions offer full days of remote on those days that would be full remote prior to opening school?
You know, that's a good question and and I I've I've basically said that, stated that to Kerry Kubaki and I told her that after tonight's vote, we'd have better answers for her. But I think she was excited about the possibility of that.
Okay.
For that week.
Okay. So we'll we'll ask Champions to look at that and see if they can potentially do that.
I think that that would be a go based on your vote this evening, but we would we would have to talk with them about where they might, where that might occur, if it's just at the MEK or if it's at all three buildings, if depending on the numbers and the registration numbers. They have a regular clientele, they have a regular group of folks who have utilized their services. And there may be additional, there may be additional students at this point for those days too, so.
For, I know that, of course, it flipped down on me, that's why I'm taking a minute, so excuse me. Will there be lists of anything that teachers need, Brian? I think normally, you know, in September, you get this this list for teachers. Is that going to happen or change at all and I asked that?
I think that'll be communicated by each teacher. We try to keep those lists at a minimum. They've been long in the past and and my feeling is that school systems need to provide materials for students. That's our job. And so I think that hopefully we'll have enough school supplies on hand. There may be teachers that ask for specific items. You know, there might be notebooks and pencils and things such as that. But we're also been in a hybrid model and most of our students have been in hybrids. So they've been in and out of school. So they basically have their supplies, if you will. And we'll continue to have supply rooms that are stocked and hopefully we'll continue to be stocked with what we need.
And we have, and just a related question about PPE equipment. You know, we will have to have all the PPE equipment that we need because that is also contractual, right, Brian?
We have it. Yep, we're fully stocked with PPE equipment and we'll continue, we continue to restock.
Brian, a question from a parent was, are the kids allowed to talk to each other during lunch?
Yes, we will allow students to talk to each other during lunch if as long as they're six feet apart.
And so again, snack, mask breaks, everything like that. Anytime a student takes off their mask, they will have to be six feet apart.
Correct.
So for example, as we talked about today, Brian, again, we are not living in normal times. So what a usual recess looks like with people running So what a usual recess looks like with people running around and classes co-mingling, kids have to stay apart.
Right. Recession will be one class at a time, if, if, if then. I mean, it'll be, then there'll be different parts of the playground. And if students are on playground equipment, they'll be wearing masks. Because they'll be the opportunity to get closer than you probably would want them. If they're waiting in line to get on top of a slide or waiting in line for swings and things like that, so. That's what we've done and currently, that's what we're doing.
Um, other people have other questions about the plan itself. Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if, if I'm thinking of this the right way. Um, assuming, I'm just making an assumption just so I can get this out of my mouth, but, um, assuming that the survey data showed that. Um, it's about a wash between those who went from remote to in-person and those who went from previously hybrid to remote. Assuming that's a wash, just for the sake of, uh, discussion. Um, am I right then in assuming that essentially that means that the number of kids in school will. Uh, in-person at the same time will have doubled because cohort two and three are now gonna both be there at the same time. Is, is that about right?
That's correct.
Okay, so given that, and Mr. Chair, if it's okay, just to follow up. Uh, with, with some of the issues around, um, interior rooms and stuff like that, um, how, how are we, how are we doing that?
Well, we're continuing to put chairs three feet apart. Uh, a teacher's chair is six feet away. So that she can, or he can be in the front of the class and have that six feet. Uh, we have air purifiers in every room, we have windows that'll be cracked. Um, we have ventilation systems that are bringing in cool, fresh air from the outside in every classroom. And that'll continue on, much like it has all year with hybrid. Um. And all the students will be three feet seat edge to seat edge. And we're able to do that. Otherwise, otherwise we would not be talking tonight about a reopening plan.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions from committee members? Mr. Rowe, go right ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Um. I, I'm happy with the way the town numbers have gone down and all the studies coming out that saying three feet. It appears to be excellent for students and that will work as long as you're wearing masks. Um, but there have been some, have, being in, you know. School committee here, being a teacher in another district, being president of all the high school soccer coaches, I've heard things from across the state and I do know. There's been student-to-student transmission, there's even been. Coincidental possible school-to-school transmission through athletics and things like that. I'm just wondering what the contact tracing is gonna be. Hopefully there won't be a need for it, but. But when, when it was at its peak, there definitely seemed across states, or not states, or towns, for that to falter. And, and I've heard people say that the contact tracing was not good during December, January when it was peaking. Just wanna make sure that we, we have the staff and ability to do that when twice as many kids.
Well, we, we obviously have the disclaimer at the beginning of the, in the policy, the, the plan tonight, that. If we need to go backwards here, we'll, we'll go backwards. Uh, if we identify students or students who are COVID positive. Uh, they'll be on quarantine and those around them that have had close contact, as per CDC and our definitions, will be. Uh, quarantined also. Um, and hopefully we can pick up these, if there are small pockets, we can pick them up and eliminate them through that process, which we've been able to do thus far. We've had a hockey team, we've had a basketball team, we've had a volleyball team that have close contacts and we've shut them down. Um, it's not a happy time for parents, especially in the middle of a season or at the beginning of a season, or at the end of a season. When you have to postpone games and shut down games because of one child or whatever, but. Those are the rules and those are the rules we've adhered to and will continue to adhere to. That's not changing. Our mitigation strategies will not change. We'll continue to encourage, as I said. Encourage all those things we've encouraged, uh, and require all those things that we've required. Uh, in terms of mask breaks, in terms of masking, in terms of hand washing, um, in terms of kids staying home if they're not well. Uh, et cetera, et cetera. And we've, we've, again, given parents the option that. The full remote option is always there and will continue to be there. Um, so if parents do not feel comfortable sending their child to school, the full remote option is still there this year.
Greg, one quick question, just cause I think it's related. Brian, explain. The model we've been working with, the hybrid, um, currently. If a child's out in quarantine, they can, they can buzz in remotely. So can you talk about what's gonna happen now where everybody's in school? What's gonna happen to the child that has to quarantine for a number of days?
In the middle school, it'll continue to be the same. Uh, at the elementary school, we'll have a teacher buddy system where the teacher, the student will get assignments and we'll have teacher check-ins during the day. Um, but those remote classes, if what's, students quarantine and there are ten kids that are quarantined. We can't put a remote class from. Twenty-two to thirty-two, if you will. Um, so it would have to be sort of an alternative teacher check-in. Uh, and the teachers have worked that out and the principals have worked that out at the elementary level thus far, and it seems to have worked. So we'll continue to do that. And hopefully, fingers crossed, knock on wood, and we, we won't have outbreaks, but if we do. And if it involves an entire classroom, then the entire classroom would go remote, uh, if we had to. Uh, so there are situations like that that'll have to be dealt with on a situation-to-situation basis. But at this point, um. We feel strongly that we have the mitigation strategies in place to deal with, with most situations and. If we have, most situations we've had thus far have been isolated. And continue to be isolated. And like I said, our numbers right now, we're down to two last week and I'm not sure. It may be still two this week or maybe one, I'm not sure. Uh, but they've gone down considerably, those in the community have gone down considerably. We're in a positive trend. Uh, you know, a negative numbers means a positive trend, so I'm not saying. If the pandemic's over, um, but I'm just saying we're, we're, we're trending in a positive way. And hopefully it'll continue to trend in a positive way. And as long as people are careful, as long as people aren't sending their sick children to school. If, if people identify their child as being COVID positive, the child really cannot come, come to school. That's happened in a couple of instances. Um, where, where parents have knowingly sent their kids and then we just have to make sure that. And we will continue to have waiting rooms, uh, which were designed at the beginning of the year for, for teachers, for students and teachers or whoever are symptomatic. Um, and, and parents are asked, are called and asked to bring the child home and have the child tested and checked, so.
And Brian, related to that. Um, if a child is quarantined, does that count as a, a sick day for the child or no, because they're in quarantine?
If the child's quarantined, I don't think we're gonna count that as a sick day.
Thank you. Um.
Just like a teacher, we're not counting it as a crude sick time. I, I, you know, that's something that I need to follow up with you on that and make sure that what the state guidelines are on that. Um, but it's not really the child's fault, but. The child is sick, so I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Uh, I know somebody put the question up and I, I just wanna address this now. Somebody put the question up about, uh, statewide travel and everything like that. We will talk about that at next meeting, next Thursday. Uh, primarily because that just hit, so I wanna make sure we're all in compliance with, uh, going out of state and coming back, so we will. We will address that next week.
Mr. Chair, that just came out, it's a twenty-four hour rule. So if you wanna go down to Providence to have dinner with your family and come back, there's no rule about being quarantined. If you wanna go on a ski trip with your family for a day and you wanna come back, there's no rule on quarantine. So that basically has changed, that sort of twenty-four hour period has changed, as I understand it, it's a travel advisory for that twenty-four hour period.
So, um. Also talk about technology, Brian, a little bit. What's gonna happen with technology for us?
We're, hopefully, we're asking folks that have, uh, school-issue technology on April fifth. To bring them back into school. Um, and if parents can assist in that, that'll be, that'd be awesome. Um, but maybe perhaps fifth graders, fourth graders can do that. Obviously, middle schoolers can do that. Uh, they'll be bringing their, their technology back and forth from school to home. Uh, we're starting that again, or we're starting that at the middle school this year. But at the, at the other elementary level, we'll get as many of the units that the district owns, upwards of seven hundred, eight hundred. Back into schools so they can be utilized in the classrooms until such time as the two thousand Chromebooks, which have arrived. Uh, are being formatted and will be sent and utilized in the classroom. Uh, that's a major process, getting those imaged and getting those into classrooms, but our hope. Our hope will be to get as many units in each class as we possibly can. Um, our ask will be that parent, uh, that students, uh, bring in the units that they've had at home. Um, and bring them into school and they'll stay at school for school use.
Thank you. Other questions with people here? Uh, Mr. Rowe, go right ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. And, and you asked the question that I wanted to know about what the, the kids that were quarantined would have to do. So, Mr. Lynch, thank you for that answer. Um, but I did have a question with, with testing in that regards. What, will we have. Increased access to testing? Is testing going to be the same? Is the school gonna help? Is, are people on their own?
We, as a district.
Is a situation like that now?
We, as a district, will not be testing. Um, our employees are able to be tested at the fire station. Uh, any employee can be tested at a fire station. We ask parents to get their children's tested if they, they're symptomatic. Um, but we, as a school system at this point, are not, are not testing.
Thank you. Brian, if someone filled out the survey erroneously and just realized it, who should they contact?
They should contact their building principal.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Or they can also reach out to Melanie Gates. But building principal would be the best person tomorrow if they did that and as quickly as possible tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Other questions about the plan itself? Okay, so I tried to, oh, go ahead, Ms. Terrell, go ahead.
I'm sure. And, uh, uh, I wanna be clear that I know survey data just came in, like as of Sunday night, and you guys spent Monday calling people, so I, I know. Uh, I'm not, uh, asking the world of you guys, but, um, one of the reasons why I think my, uh, my works. Um, return to work plan was super successful was because of the existence of these maps. Um, these maps that showed where people were gonna be, worst-case scenario, and I just wondered if, give, you know, given. When I heard that we were gonna get a return to school plan, the major thing on my mind was lunch. And I'm sure that was the same with all you guys. And I just wondered if there was a way for us to see. Exactly how that would be laid out, like where would they be? And, um, you know, how would the different lunches work and all that stuff? I'm sure you guys have these things. Um, I'm just wondering if we can see them.
I mean, we could certainly produce those for you, but, but, but rest assured, they're, they're six feet apart where students are taking off their masks and. And desks are three feet apart. I mean, I, we can certainly get you, uh, seating arrangements for, without students' names on them. For the places that we've taken up for lunches and such. We could certainly do that for next, next meeting.
Um, that would be great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Greg, I saw your hand up, so I wanna make sure you're, uh.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, just to answer someone else's question, cause I know the answer. MCAS is still scheduled, it has been pushed back, uh, but it is still currently scheduled, so just answer that question. Other questions? Okay, with, oh, Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Sorry about that. Um, so this is in reference to, uh, let me just find the page here. This is in reference to page fourteen, uh, under transportation. And, um, it just, it just says, uh, Middleborough school limitations are lifted unless our community is deemed as having a high prevalence of COVID. And I just wanted to clarify, does that mean red versus yellow?
Yeah, that, 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 that does mean red, um, and that would only mean, that would only affect high school and middle school buses. Where there could only be two in a seat. And according to Tracy Donahue, very rarely do they have middle school and high school students, students sitting more than two in a seat. But right now, where we are, we are, uh. Not red, uh, we can sit anywhere, we can sit three to a seat.
Got it. Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch.
Yep.
Other. Questions before, I'm, what I'm gonna do, just so you know, when we're done with these questions, I'm gonna move on to the calendar itself so we can. Ask questions and about the calendar, so I'm doing it as two separate pieces. Um, but I, since both are together, I wanna handle it that way, if that makes sense to everybody. So other questions about the plan? Seeing no one, I'm gonna ask for questions about the calendar itself. Do people have particular questions about the calendar? Mr. Rowe?
Um, I'm, uh, Mr. Chair, through you, I'll be, I'm very concerned with this as. You know, looking at asking parents less than two weeks ahead of time to find. To maybe stay home from work or find childcare or things like that and, and that sort of a timeframe is. To me, extreme asking a lot. I, I'm wondering, is there any way, do they need all those days or? Are the two PD days sufficient? But I, I can just imagine if you're in. One cohort, all of a sudden your kids are home and then the other cohort, the kids are off completely and it's. And I can just see that messing with a lot of parent work schedules.
Well, Mr. Rowe, we certainly understand that. Um, the only way to do this properly is to have that week. To reconfigure our, our schools. Um, and get them to the point where they're, they're currently completely different setup right now. Uh, and they're moving to the more traditional setup that we've had in the past. But it takes a great deal of work to move all those desks, uh, around the entire, uh, school and, and to set up places that weren't set up and. Set up. A Nichols cafeteria as, as Nichols gym as a cafeteria, to have those Nichols, uh. So custodians head down to the elementary to help out. Uh, the teachers need those two days, two professional development days to reorganize their classrooms. Um, if, if you've known any elementary teachers, and, and I was one, and I've, I've known a few. Uh, an elementary classroom is a bit more complicated than perhaps a secondary classroom in terms of setup. Uh, and that takes a while, takes time. Um, you know, this is a massive undertaking to bring. Basically to double our size in, in, in school and to bring all these students back and we just need the time. Um, so basically it's taking one cohort and making them fully remote and then obviously taking the Thursday, Friday professional development days. But those are professional development days that were later in April. And those will now be learning days for those students. Those students will now be in school in those days. So I realize it's inconvenient. I realize it's a difficult time for folks. Um, but it is a massive change, uh, and what we've heard and what we've tried to do and what we've wanted to do. Is get kids back into school. Um, and to get kids back into school, these are moves that we feel that we need to make and we have to make to make this happen the right way. Uh, I think it's respectful to teachers to give them the time to set up these rooms. Uh, we've negotiated with teachers over the past, oh, three afternoons or three lengthy sessions in the last, uh, week or so. Uh, and agreed that, that this is something that we, we provide them with, the plan, uh, and it's, uh, it's really the only way. It's an investment. In the full reopening on April fifth, unfortunately. It, it's, it's a difficult week prior for parents, I get that, and guardians, I understand that. Uh, but, uh, in the end, the students will all be back if, if they so choose on April fifth and. There'll be no more hybrid, uh, which, maybe that's the trade-off. Because then the parents will have five days to. Return to work, et cetera, uh, however they wanna handle, uh, their lives from then on, but students will be fully back. So.
And Brian, can you, since we started the meeting with the conversation about calendar, can you go over again, just so. People may have just joined us, what the, what that week's calendar will look like?
Yeah, so, so that week's calendar will be the Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Cohort one students will be in the building. Uh, and continue their education in the building, in person. We'll have K through eight. Students will be fully remote. Um, half of them would be fully remote, but the whole K through eight will now be fully remote, the Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And then on the Thursday, Friday, those are days without school. That will be for professional development days on April first and second. Professional development days that are now being moved from K to eight, from Friday, April sixteenth and Monday, April twenty-sixth. To April first and second. And on those days in April later on, we'll have two additional in-school days. Uh, to provide, uh, for in-school education, basically. So there's a trade-off there and we realize it, as I just said to, to Mr. Rowe, uh, there is a trade-off there. But the, the trade-off is that we actually gain two days later on, uh, with in-person learning. For those folks that choose in-person learning.
Other questions about the calendar? Uh, Mr., I'm, I'm totally sorry. Mr. Oakley, I, I, I have a small screen, so I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, no, I didn't raise my hand.
I thought you did, Mr. Oakley, I apologize.
I might have wiped my nose.
Okay. Anybody have questions about the calendar with your tiny, tiny hands that I can't see in the side here? Um, thank you. Now I can see you all. That's much better. Um. I, I will say this, since no one has questions, so for the, uh, about a week now. Uh, myself, uh, the superintendent and, uh, Dr. Gates and Mr., uh. Stevens have been meeting with, uh, members of the Middleborough Teachers Union. Um, we believe. Um, we believe, um, we have mapped out um, the pieces that we needed to to move forward for a full April opening. Um, the, having the professional development days in this way are part of the agreement that we've um, sort of worked out. We haven't agreed to anything yet because we're just to be honest with you, it's just down to me and the union president's meeting around language, just to make sure the language pieces work. Um, I I think, um, first and foremost, I want to say the teachers have been uh, very responsive and very open to the conversations that we had. There was not quite frankly, any um, issues that I saw. It was more discussions about different pieces. And so I'm very happy with that. Um, you know, there there are, there are pieces that are still going to go on and I would remind everybody, um, as best I can, that this, although we're moving to full full day with kids in school, it's not the way school was a year ago. Um, you know, prior, the kids still need to wear masks. Um, where teachers will be in and out of the classroom at times because they will be trying to get vaccinated. Um, they'll be continuing things like that and and as sad as it is, uh, that's the the reality of it. Um, it is not something that any of us wanted or any of us ever dreamed of for the most part. Um, spent the better part of the year with everybody here trying to make changes on the fly. And I think this is just another one. I think sadly, um, the state has handled this as horribly as they could from the very beginning and their lack of sort of having conversations with people and just dumping things time and time again on administrations and school committees is a pretty sad reality. Um, but that hasn't stopped since probably August of this year. It's just been continual and it's been ever changing. I I would thank this committee because one piece that has completely changed um, that we did very early on was we made it masks for all of our students. Um, the state allowed under under first grade, but they just changed that to say that can no longer happen. Um, so I appreciate, um, I appreciate especially the you know, that was really driven by the conversation Carolyn Lyons, who explained to us what had happened over the summertime. Um, and what led into our discussions for that. So I am uh, very thankful for the work the administration has done uh, the entire time. Uh, does anyone have any other questions? Mr. Stevens?
I just also want to thank all the people that came to the negotiation meetings to talk about the new uh, way we're going to do things. And we have like a dozen teachers in there, I I something like that. And it was a large meeting with twenty people on the call. And I got to say it really well. Everybody has the, you know, the the best interest of the kids at heart. Everybody wants this to be the best they can. So I I just want to thank everybody involved because it did go very smoothly. I thought.
Any other comments or questions um, specifically on the calendar? With that, Brian, do you have anything else under superintendent's report?
I do not this evening.
Okay. Then with that, I'm going to sort of give a last call for questions to the people out in the audience. Um, in case questions, I don't believe I missed a question. So if I did, if you could post, I will be more than happy to ask it. Um, just for the discussion and I'm on the superint plan. Administration's plan, I should say. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second for a discussion. Uh, Brian, one question I get that the last day of school does not change at all correctly as of right now because of I know we may have snow tomorrow, but as of right now, as day of school has changed.
Yes, Friday, June 18th.
Thank you very much. That was a question, so I wanted to make sure we answered that.
Yes.
Um, any further discussion on approval of the plan? Mr. Oakley?
Uh, this is a question for you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess it's really like a procedural question, but uh, I'm I'm not super comfortable, I guess, with um, without necessarily knowing what the change in populations are in person and remote, you know, as a result of the survey data. And um, without necessarily knowing um, specifically how we're going to do cafeteria and stuff. Um, uh, understanding that we're going to get uh, that we've got a commitment that those things will work, but we just haven't necessarily seen it. If I say, uh, I'm in favor of this this week and then next week when we see those things, I don't like them. Um, for me as a school committee member, what uh, what would you recommend I do? Um, abstain or or vote nay on this? Um, even if it passes, I just want more information, that's all.
So my suggestion, I mean, we can obviously, I would obviously ask the superintendent to bring forth any questions. Okay, but um, two things. One is if the school committee votes for the plan tonight, then the plan will be put in place. Families will be notified uh, that the plan's going to happen. Um, so that this, you have a motion answering your just, um, you could ask to save the vote till next week till you saw those plans. That would be fine. Um, my, to be honest with you, would be about the calendar. Vote to change the calendar separately um, from the plan, if you will, Rich. So there's that option. Um, you always have the right to vote yes, no. Really, you're you're, you have four options. You can vote yes, no, abstain, or you can vote present. Voting present is the exact same thing as vote as abstaining. Um, it's you have to vote if you was we're doing this via roll call, so you'd have to give me some indication of what it is. Um, it, you know, so that I I think I've explored options now. Um, if with not to accept the super plan, my nation to the committee would which way do you want to go? Do you want to ask the superintendent to ask for a waiver from the state? Or is it that you voted against the plan because you preferred that the superintendent give us additional information? But that kind of thing. Um, I do completely agree with that with Mr. Rowe that uh, there are pieces of this that when put together, um, you know, make it difficult for parents, but it's that it's that piece, which is do you bring kids back to fully and havoc or or vice versa, that kind of thing. Um, so I hope I answered your question, Rich.
Yeah, yes, you did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And and so for that matter, can, uh, sorry, the motion on the table is to accept the plan and the calendar or just the plan?
We are just doing the plan right now, Rich.
Okay.
So Mr. Stevens, you had your hand up. Go right ahead.
I just want this clarification. Uh, I know you said you need, uh, Mr. Through you, Chair to Mr. Lynch. Uh, you said you needed those three days remote. Uh, March 20, uh, whatever those days were and then and then the two PD days to get the schools ready, right? But we're planning on doing full K through eight open on the 5th, but the state's not requiring that. It's K, right? The height, the middle school can go later in the month. If you delayed the middle, I just ask if you were to delay the middle school opening per the state, would that change anything about taking those days off, like having those days remote?
No, not really.
Row, I saw you. Make sure you unless it was the same.
Now, through you, Mr. Chair, um, I mean, the the pieces of this seem to be a bit spread out from me like I am like the April 5th date, that makes sense. The state's requiring that. I have full faith that Mr. Lynch will get us the answers we need by April 5th, you know, and we'll be able to, like all parents can circle in black Sharpie mark marker unless it snows, they're going back on April 5th. Um, however, the the calendar dates and like Mr. Oakley, I do want to see what the cafeteria looks like, what the flow of the school looks like before I approve the plan. Is is, are we approving, you know, everyone's going back April 5th and then the plan details next week? Or and then the calendar after it just, what specifically does it be? Because the plan is essentially a skeleton and there's a lot of details that need to be filled in and I and I trust the administration's going to fill it in.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. The 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 administration's worked very hard on this and and has a plan in place. They've assured me and we've we've had several meetings, um, that that we've gone through this information and they're working with the facilities director. And and we're sure, uh, based on the numbers we have, that we can make this work. Um, we know it can work. We can certainly provide you the information that you'll need. Um, but we know this plan will work. We're anxious to get back kids back in school. School is the place for students to be, uh, social, emotionally, intellectually, physically. Uh, we need to get them back. We need to get school back going. Uh, and I think that we're, we can do it safely. We assure you, we can do it safely. I can certainly get you the maps of the cafeterias and but but I would assure you again that that we can do this and we're able to do this based on the numbers, based on the survey. Um, and that's, those are the numbers I can get you and I can get you the numbers on the survey. I can get you those tomorrow. Um, to let you know exactly where we are with the survey. Um, uh, I it's one of those things where I just don't have the numbers in front of me. I know that, for example, MKG, there are thirty-six kids coming back from, thirty-eight coming back from uh, fully remote and eleven going out in total, no, thirty-eight at Nichols Middle School coming in and eleven going out uh, at the, let me see. At the MKG, there are thirty-five returning and four going from hybrid to remote. Um, so and then we we take those kids from that are going remote, they're coming back in and we're spreading those out amongst other classrooms. Um, and our class size is, has been impacted a little bit, but with when we're spreading these kids out amongst the whole school, uh, it's not impacted incredibly negatively. So thirty-six coming back from remote at HBB, um, and one going remote. Uh, but again, we have, you know, five classes at each grade level. Uh, and these kids are separated amongst twenty-five classes through these thirty-eight students or thirty-six students. So the numbers even out, the numbers pan out. Uh, and we basically have a have a plan that's in place and and we feel it works and and I I hopefully you trust in the administration to be doing the right thing here and and, you know, we're we're not putting kids in a dangerous spot. We're not putting kids more than closer than three feet together. We're not feeding kids or taking masks off. Uh, not using the six feet distancing for that. We've been working on this for six weeks. Uh, and we'll continue to work on it. We'll get you the specific information, but I assure you, you can trust in your administrative team uh, to have done things right and to have worked hard on this and make sure that we can make this happen for the kids coming back, for the families that want their kids to come back. Um, and I and I think that that's important. I understand your concerns. Uh, and uh, I just, I will certainly get you the information. I think we don't need to notify families. I think we need to notify folks. If you don't approve this plan tonight, then then we're offered another delay here and um, I just think it's in the best interest of our students uh, and teachers to get students back into school. So that's my position.
Rich, I will go to you in one second, but I do want to answer Greg and 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 just to be clear. As I understand the superintendent's plan, the plan is to have K through eight on April 5th. And so in my judgment, the motion on the table is to have um, K through eight on April 5th. So any, if there was members who wish to do anything other than that, that's what we are currently voting on, if that makes sense to everybody.
Okay. Just the final number, Early Childhood Center has uh, one going out and three coming back in. So for example, kindergarten, we're 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 set there. Obviously, and all these other schools were set too.
And uh, Rich, you had your hand up, so I'm gonna call on you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just don't want the, my objection to be mischaracterized as trying to delay the return to school. That's absolutely not what it is. Um, but I I think that uh, the the people of Middleborough put me here and I'm sitting on this this video because they trust that I'm going to do my research before I say yes or no to something. And these are things that I feel strongly about. Um, so I absolutely agree that April 5th, uh, I think parents should know immediately and I I have no problems with April 5th. Um, but I I just, I want to know the answers to these things before I say, yes, I approve of this plan. And that's that's all my objection is about. I have full and complete faith in the administration uh, in in you Superintendent Lynch, this is not a knock on anyone. But I just can't sit up here and say that I do my research if I ask a question and the, we don't know the answer yet. And then I say, sure, let's go for it. It it just doesn't make sense to me. So that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, Meg, go right ahead.
Um, can we just get some information probably next week or maybe the week after about how transitions will work, how kids are going from class to class, how they're going from class to gym, gym to lunch, you know, whatever it may be, locker time at the middle school, breakfast in the morning, bus dismissal, all of that stuff. It's kind of like up in the air. Can we just get some information on all that?
We can get you that additional information.
Okay, other questions? Seeing the, the chair just says going to take a vote on this piece and and just because it had been asked, I'm going to spend a little more time explaining again. This is for um, the plan running K through eight, starting April 5th. Uh, we have not voted on the calendar. We will voting on the calendar next. Makes sense to everybody? Any questions before I move on? Okay, with that, with that, I will, um, oh, Rich, you had a question?
Yeah, sorry. Um, I heard what you said earlier, but I'm not sure I'm completely clear on it. So a a uh, I vote on this is approving only the April 5th return to school date or it's approving the details of this plan?
It's approving the details of this plan for April 5th. So K through eight would go back to school full time April 5th. Okay? Do you have additional questions, Rich? Again, I know this is hard and and please don't get me wrong. And I agree with everything that uh, people have said. I mean, if you don't vote for this plan, you are not voting against the administration. You are voting for a variety of reasons. One, you might want more information. Uh, Greg mentioned before, if somebody may want the eighth grade to go back, the middle school to go back at a different time in which people are allowed to. Um, we'll have that discussion afterwards if this motion fails. Uh, but um, I just want to make sure everyone understands this is for the the current plan, which would be to move uh, K through eight back on April 5th. Um, the calendar is not being discussed here. Those pieces aren't. This is just what's being discussed. Teresa, I saw your hand go up, so I'll
Um, yes, my concern would be if we delayed this piece, then we are also delaying the calendar, which I know we're not together, but in essence, they become one piece. Because why would we vote to have those remote days the first and second if we're not moving forward to the plan? So um, that's just my two cents. Um, I feel like I have enough information tonight. I feel like we um, have enough from our superintendent to move forward with a vote and people and families out there are expecting this to happen. And I would just say that we try to move forward with that as much as we can.
Um, and it's just to add, just to make clear, I don't know that whatever were to happen, we would still need time for teachers to set up their classroom and a wide variety of other things. So in my mind, we could still vote the calendar outside of the plan, if you will, Teresa, because those things need to happen on a particular timeframe, not necessarily a timeframe that's listed, but they need to happen in order to occur. So that's all I wanted to make sure. So any further comment on this piece? Seeing none, the motion on the table, which I've explained a hundred times, so I won't explain it again. Uh, Mr. Oakley?
Nay.
Uh, Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Rowe? Uh, Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And a motion passes um, with one nay, one aye and four yeses. So we'll go with that. Um, and now we'll go
Mr. Rowe said present, I think.
Yes, I said one uh, nay. Uh, one, oh, sorry, I may have said present, one present and four yeses. So we'll go that way. Um, with that, um, we'll move to the calendar. Um, Chair, I entitate a motion to make the adjustments to the calendar as presented tonight by the superintendent.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Rowe, go right ahead.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. I I I feel like this, we're trying to get kids back in school and yet we're going to have them home for an entire week. And it's just to me, the timing of it is off. I I wish there was another way we, do we wrap? To me, the timing of it is off. I, I wish there was another way. We, do we wrap the PD days around that weekend? Um, do we? You know, I mean, the kids are only half in school. Do, do you need every kid out of school to make those adjustments? Um, you know, especially when you're moving. Moving desks into areas that are not. Being used or kids can go outside and things like that. So, so to me, to have kids stay, be at home, even if half of it's hybrid. For an entire week, just to get them back in school, just for, uh, two weeks later to have a week off. Is, is. Is frustrating. And, and to me, it happened very quickly. We didn't get this information until one o'clock today. So most of us didn't see until we get home at dinnertime. So for us to process what that's going to happen. That's a lot and, and I understand the school needs time to do it. Um, but to me, it's kind of say, we need to get school, kids back in school immediately. Let's send them home for a week to do that. Just in, in the same, in the same timeframe as a vacation is. To me, it's, it's forcing the issue, it's shoehorning it. But again, the governor is putting us in the spot, isn't he? The governor is the one who said you have to be back by April fifth. We can't say, oh, we're going to come back on April eighth. And things like that. So to me, it's very frustrating to have it, this kind of dropped on us today. And I feel. For a lot of families, this is going to be really, really hard. And, and so hopefully, you know. I don't know if we have chance to change this or do options, but that's, that's my two cents.
Um, I'm, uh, I'm, I'll go to Greg in one second, but I would say this. Um, and I want to be clear. Um. So. Um. Myself and Mr. Stevens negotiated with the union about the professional development days, okay? I, I think that we are duty bound, um, in my estimation for us to both vote for it. Uh, because that's the way in which we negotiate. Um, and so I just feel the need to tell that to the committee members, um. Because. You know, what needed to happen, I think the other piece to remember is it's not just about. Moving desks and things like that. We have lots and lots of teachers. With all their materials pushed aside into a corner. That they right now can't get to because it's all pushed aside into an area that's surrounded by the extra desks and everything we move. Um, and so there has to be time for them. To essentially put their, their, their rooms back in order in a semblance that. You know, is sort of for them. They're, they're missing stuff at times that all got shoved away. In August when they weren't around. Um, and that's, those are the things that Greg and I heard and the superintendent was there. So, um, I don't want to steal Greg's thunder, but, uh, Greg, go ahead, because, uh.
No, I just wanted to respond like I, I had the same. Thing that Richard's going to say, but also, Mr. Rowe, uh, you know, it is the governor. I mean, he, he put April fifth as the date. And. That's the Monday after the weekend. We can't, there's nothing else we can do. You know, the, we need, we need time for the teachers and we negotiated the two professional development days, which I think makes sense for everybody. And the option, the real thing is, do we need those three days? Before that to get ready, that I think that's your issue is like, there's a whole week off. And, you know, I asked Mr. Lynch and, you know. I, I, I believe Mr. Lynch when he says that he needs the, the extra, that, that, that time. I, I don't think Mr. Lynch would. Not have kids in school if they could be in school. That's my belief. But, you know, it is a tough situation. Would, would this, uh, come out from the state two weeks ago? I mean, it, it, we had cra- crazy little time to do this.
Go ahead, Brad.
Mr. Chair, it was, it was voted by the Board of Education on Friday, March fifth. It was announced on, on March ninth. Uh, from the commissioner, it was distributed to principals, it's superintendents, administrators. Uh, if you look at the timeline, uh, we did as much as we could in as little time as we could. There was absolutely essential that we surveyed parents and got their information. We wanted to give them a week to get that information to us. And really think about it and commit to it. So we did that survey. Um, we did do teacher negotiations out of respect for the teachers. We had three separate meetings scheduled from four to six last Friday, last Tuesday and today. Um, we tried to do this in a compact schedule as quickly as we could to cover all our bases. So that everybody was listened to. Um, I have floated these ideas out to this, out, out to the, the committee in previous meetings. About what we might do and what we could do and what we possibly would need to do. That week before that, March twenty ninth, thirtieth and thirty first. Cohort one will be in school. Our highest need students will be in school. Our preschool will be attending. We will have preschool those three days. Um. We have one cohort that is now going to be basically, uh, fully remote, but they'll be. They'll be learning. They'll have their teachers. They will be learning on those three days. So they'll have, it's not non-school days. Now admittedly. The Friday, the Thursday and Friday will be non-school days. Uh, but they are professional development days that are in the calendar. They would just happen to be moved. From the Friday and before April vacation and Monday after vacation to that April first and second dates. But they will be in-person days later on. So those days that we would have lost. On the Friday and Saturday before, Friday and, excuse me, Friday before vacation and Monday after vacation. Are now, will now be in-person days for those students. So we gain those days. At the end of April, when students are in school and learning, learning how to read, learning how to write, learning how to do arithmetic. Uh, in person, in front of a teacher all day long.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Megan, go ahead. Meg, go right ahead. Sorry, no, sorry. Greg, if you want to finish, go ahead. If you have something to finish, I mean, me to direct.
No, I just, my final point was, you know, we hired Mr. Lynch and that's our main. Oversight is to make sure that he's doing his job. I, I, I think he's done a fantastic job with the ten days. That, I mean, this has got to, this has to have been non-stop. Planning and talking, uh, for, for everybody. And it's just, I understand, uh. School members' frustration that there's not more details here, but perhaps, uh, maybe next meeting, we can get more details. Damn, I'll set.
The next meeting, I will, I assure you, I'll have principals here, uh, talking exactly about their buildings and how they're set up. And the decisions they made in their individual buildings. Um, but each building is different. Each is nuanced by its space, uh, and its availability of faculty and staff and. Um, so there are significant differences in each building, but there are similarities. And like I said, the similarity is to get those shiny little faces in front of us and, and have them in person, uh, learning. Uh, and with, like I said, we have, we've not had issues with basking. So we're looking forward to having them in. They, the principals have worked with teachers and will work to, with teachers on cadence and passing and breaks and schedules. That's what they do. Uh, that's their administrative position. Uh, they're a great group of folks who know what they're doing and I have confidence in their abilities at each building level. To make this work because they've assured me that it can work in their buildings. Otherwise, I would not be here with this particular plan.
Uh, Meg, you had questions, so I want to make sure they're answered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just, is there any way that we can use some of that PD time? I know the teachers are going to use it to set up rooms, but to go over some of the norms and procedures of when kids are coming back. And, you know, kind of let the teachers have, have their questions answered because it's really like a kind of a sense of closure. Because we're ending this like remote thing. Yes, we're still going to have to be three feet apart, six feet apart. We're still going to have the mask. But this idea of this hybrid world will no longer be. So kind of have that picture and move forward.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there will be faculty and staff meetings prior to. And opportunities for teachers' questions to be answered. Uh, we just had, you know, like I said, three sessions of teacher negotiations. They represent the teachers and. We've answered a lot of their questions, uh, specific questions that came from their teachers after meeting with their teachers. Uh, so we, you know, that's what those negotiations were set aside for is to try to answer those questions. Uh, that were sort of on the teach, on the tip of teachers' tongues and they do survey their folks. And they came to us. And also building principles have been approached by teachers who've had questions and they've been responded to also. Um, hopefully in, in, in kind.
Other questions? Seeing no one. Um, so the motion on the table is to approve the calendar as listed tonight, which will change the. End of March to beginning of April into remote, um, learning slash, um. Professional development days for the two end, just from K to eight. So again, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, on those two professional development days, the high school would still go to school.
Yes.
And the high school's days would come as they have matched on to April school vacation, the day before, the day after. And on those days, the elementary school and the middle school would go to school.
That's correct. And during that week, any T, any student, any family that needed food. Will get grab and go service from the cafeteria at no charge.
And, and just to be clear with everybody, um. Because we have changed the schedule so many times, I have not even put on the agenda. Next year's schedule because I was afraid that people would think we were changing it again. Um. So I just wanted to let, at some point soon, we will have to do next year's schedule. Teresa, go right ahead.
Just a quick question, just because we're talking about the calendar. Typically, the last day of school is a half day. It is not on the calendar as a half day. Is it a full day or a half day?
It is a full day for teachers. We've made negotiate, we have negotiations and it, it, part of that day may be self-directed for faculty members.
But for students, it's a half day.
No, no, no.
No, no.
Teresa, just so you know, the reason it's a full day. Is because we only went a hundred and seventy days this year. Students did. It is not the full one hundred and eighty days.
Of June, Teresa, I'm sorry. The eighteenth of June will be a full day of school. The twenty, uh, twenty second now in this calendar. Will be a, a, a day, half day in school for teachers and a half day self-directed, whether it's packing up their rooms or however they want to do it.
Okay. I, I knew there was an explanation. Thank you. I, it's just always been a half day for students and I wanted to be sure that we were clear on that.
No, and so, I mean, what's sort of lost in this, Teresa, again, is. We're actually going to school ten less days. The students are actually going to school ten less days. So that's part of the reason.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Uh, with that, I will take a vote. Uh, uh, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Ms. Farley.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
Mr. Rowe. Did you say name, Mr. Rowe? Sorry, I couldn't.
Nay.
Here. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So thank you very much. Um. I'm going to bring Mr. Lynch back to make sure we haven't missed anything on his. And Mr. Lynch, are we all set with you?
I think we're good. We'll give more details for next meeting and the, the administration will be at the next meeting to answer specific questions about specific schools and about specific spaces. And anything else you'd like to know what's going on in the schools in terms of, of this transition.
Um, can I make a suggestion? So just so everyone understands, because this has been. An unusual week, uh, for the superintendent and I, given the amount of meetings and things like that. Um, the agenda will probably be sent out Tuesday because part of the reason is Ann is also off. Um, this weekend, um, who usually works the agenda with us. I know. Most of things were dropped into your Dropbox, uh, because, before she left today, but there, there's still some, um, pieces of the agenda. My suggestion would be, um, I heard what people have said tonight, but if people are looking for specific information. If they could email the superintendent and I, and I will make sure it is on the agenda for next meeting. That makes sense to everybody, especially for those who had additional questions. Rich, the cafeteria plans will be on. Um, as we'll, uh, we'll have a better understanding of actual numbers and how the remote academy changed. Um, and also, um. I think the other question you had was about mask breaks. Um, so we'll have that conversation too, Rich. Um, I should also mention too, that I think, you know, there are. Things still being looked at. Uh, for example, I know the superintendent and the business manager have been looking at. Attempting to buy tents or rent tents for outside so that even on a sort of a rainy day. Kids could still go outside. Um, I will say that I, we've also heard that lots of people have been doing that. Uh, Brian too, so the amount of tents and, and stuff have been hard, but we had somebody who stepped up and said, hey, we may have something for you. So. We're still looking at that, right, Brian?
Right. We're talking with three companies at this point.
So that's good. Any other questions before I adjourn this meeting? Mr. Rowe, go right ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to thank all the administrators who have been watching this. I know that we had a lot of questions and lost specifics. And the, and the people in the comments did and the, and the administrators going through the comments and answering and the administrators watching. And, and I'm sure they're going to have everything we asked for next week because they've been working hard on this and. And hats off to all the administrators who made all this possible the whole year long.
Right. And I, I just want to say something too, because I did see some of the comments, for example, why? Um. Why couldn't we just have the custodians do this on the weekends and things like that? I will say this. For the mass majority of people, um, you've got to remember two things. We are trying to redo, um, schools to make them open for more children. In a short period of time, on top of the fact that in less than a month, we are opening a brand new high school. So there are lots of custodians who have been working a lot more hours, including our. Um, head of, um, services who has been spending most weekends. In the buildings, uh, picking up extra things and doing extra things like putting the water bottles in, Brian. To make sure the water ba- fountains work for people. So Hutch has been working hard. I know everybody has been working very hard. There is a lot to do. On top of when the governor dropped this, like I said, we're opening a brand new building. Uh, two weeks after, well, well, we're getting the building pretty much the same day, right, Brian? And technically speaking, the building's ours, the April. And so we, we get the building the same time and then we have to take over with our particular piece. So I appreciate. Um, I understand the question, so I want to make sure people understand the answers to those questions. Um, and thank you to everybody and. Thank you to the committee and, and again, Greg was right. Thank you to the administrators for their hard work and dedication. We really appreciate it. And with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will take a second for Meg's children. With that, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Ms. Farley.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Rowe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good day and we'll see you next Thursday.